Let us power heading a word of breath. While God we come at this meeting under this given name, I can give all the blessings that have stolen us down throughout the eight, the years. While God we act against the young folks in it, all they do is pray that you put a special blessing upon them as well. While God we ask for that city that is making this meeting, yes, yes, for they end it with that we represent.
Amen. Thank you so very much, Your Honor. Um, I hope that all of you have looked at the minutes of February the eighteenth meeting, and if you have, I would appreciate a motion to second that those minutes be approved as written.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Castor and second by Ms. Frazier, that the minutes of February eighteenth be approved as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Ayes have it and the motions carried. Again, good afternoon and welcome to our meeting. For those of you who may not have attended any of our meetings before, we have public comments at the beginning of our meetings. We have public comments in two areas. We have public comments of agenda items. Uh, that means that any item on the agenda, if you do not have a public hearing section on it, when I open the floor for a public hearing of agenda items, you may approach the podium, state your name and your comment. And the next item is public comments of other matters. That means that when I close the agenda and open that, that mean anything that you want to bring to council, you may approach the podium and state the subject matter. And again, it's public comments. We listen and, and, you know, take into consideration whatever you tell us. We do not get into the back and forth conversation unless there's a question need to be answered. So at this time, the floor is open for public comments of agenda items. Hearing none, we will close that portion of it and open it for public comments of other matters.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Green. I'm an activist here in Orangeburg, South Carolina, and I would like to invite the county and the council members out to an event that I'm having on March the eighth, twenty twenty five. I'm having, um, it's two parts to this. The first part is a vigil at the Railroad Corner to represent the history and the legacy that the Railroad Corner played in the state of South Carolina and Orangeburg, South Carolina. The second part, that is at four P M. The second part is at five P M. Civil rights, human rights, the new movement. Where are we going from here? And that will be hosted by me at D and B Restaurant, eight, five, one, Johnson Tazin Drive, Orangeburg, South Carolina, March the eighth at five, right after the Railroad Corner. So I would like for you all to show up, have something to say, get involved, because we have a long fight ahead of us in the next three years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Cecil Williams. This is my great first speaking for the people of Orangeburg and honorable council persons. I'm speaking to you tonight about the, uh, the, uh, Railroad Corner and the, uh, the new museum that's going on there. We're so very proud to be a part of that and bring this information. Uh, surely we will be bringing a ten million dollars worth of artifacts, photographs, documents into a new museum in Orangeburg when that building is finished. And so, so we are presently operating a museum now at another location, but we, we can't wait under this rule of honor. Um, I am appearing here tonight to, um, request, um, uh, for county council, um, a line item support to the Southern Rights Museum when we begin operating and speaking now in reference to the, I'm sure, the twenty twenty-six budget. Um, we anticipate with a one hundred thousand cars that pass Orangeburg each day, and that's an M I T study that I'm using, a hundred thousand cars pass on Interstate twenty-six daily. We're estimating to bring into Orangeburg approximately two hundred thousand people into our museum. Well, we anticipate, based on industry visiting standards now, on day visitors, out of that, sixty thousand visitors, a hundred, sixty percent of the visitors, rather, of the two hundred thousand will be day visitors. That is visitors that just come in and of course leave. Overnight visitors, we're estimating of that two hundred thousand, forty percent, and that would be eighty thousand, uh, people would come in. And they spend an average of two hundred dollars per person on lodging, food, and other supplies. So we're estimating that we will be bringing into Orangeburg on an annual basis, uh, twenty-two million dollars into the county of Orangeburg, uh, with, uh, all the things that people do when they're traveling, uh, all the purchases they make, of course, overnight accommodation, food, and other things. We're requesting from the county council support on, as a line item, of four hundred thousand dollars annually to help us to be able to operate the museum. Uh, we have, um, the artifacts, the images, we have the history, and, uh, this, in my opinion, will be a history-making thing that'll transform Orangeburg really into a historic visiting site. And Orangeburg will, in my opinion, become a, rather than a waypoint, a destination point. As you know, with the new International African American Museum in Charleston, uh, that is aiming to bring in, uh, hundreds of thousands of people, and they're going to be passing by Orangeburg, from Orangeburg to Columbia. But we want to bring them into Orangeburg, and we think we have the vision, the museum that's going to do that. I had, uh, a prepared, uh, statement I'd like to give to each council person that has all the details, and I thank you very much for this great opportunity to speak with you.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Reverend Arnold Ray from Norway, South Carolina. I came in hopes of getting an answer to some of the questions that I presented to the council last month. I have no intent to stand before you law. I'm here representing the real concerned citizens of Edisto Drive, John W. Strowman's family and friends. I've got several questions again I need to ask you in hopes that finally I can get some answers from this panel. First question is, what does one have to do to have a county building named after him or her? So what violation would an individual, second question, so what violation would an individual or a crime would one be involved in to have his or her name removed? I need not go over what John W. Strowman's accomplishments and sacrifices that he has made in the city, county, or community of Orangeburg, South Carolina. So my question to the council is why was his name removed? When we look at what he's done, it was a violation or a hate crime? This is my question. What was the reason for his name being removed? Was it a hate crime? Or was it because he was a Muslim? Would anyone on the council care to answer that question? Councilman Dolores Frazier and county administrator Harold Young devised a scheme to remove his name for no unknown reason. It is now time to county council to put John W. Strowman's name back on the county building. His memory should not be erased in a community or city where he worked for change. Why would anyone want to erase his legacy while trying to build their own? If not out of hate? Can someone please have some answers for me? And I'm going to continue until I get some answers.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, we will, uh... Hearing none, we will close the public comments portion of the agenda, and we're going to our regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is, uh, presentation from the Edisto Elementary School Beta Club.
Good afternoon, council members and community. My name is Angela Gordon, and I am the lead beta sponsor at Edisto Elementary School. And at this time, I would like to introduce my principal, Ms. Patricia Hampton, and present our Beta Club to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The senior members of the Orangeburg County. My name is Joshua Mark, and I am the president of the, of the Edisto Elementary Beta Club. In front of you, in the blue or gold folders, you will see our brochure. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you.
As you may know, Beta is built on four pillars: academic excellence, leadership, character, and service. We strive to make a positive impact in our schools and communities. And now, we have the incredible opportunity to represent Orangeburg County District and the National Beta Convention in Orlando, Florida, in Omaha. Orlando, Florida, in June.
All right. What is your name?
What is your name?
My name is Savannah Schuler.
Good morning. My name is Katie Moore. This convention is more than just a trip. It's a chance for us to showcase our hard work, compete in academic and leadership events, and meet other high-achieving students from across the nation. It will inspire us to bring back new ideas and leadership skills that will benefit our school and community.
Good afternoon. My name is Viham Bopseti. We humbly ask for your financial support in helping us make these opportunities a reality. Your generous co-, your generous contribution would not just help fund this trip. It would invest in the future of Orangeburg County. With your help, we can continue to grow there and give back in many greater ways.
Good afternoon. My name is Cruz Shuler. And with that being said, I would like to share that this Beta Club competed in Nationals last year and came home with a first-place win in the nation in the speech competition, sixth-place win in the nation in the elementary Spanish competition, and sixth-place win in the nation in small group dance performance competition. And at this time, Imani John will share her speech with us.
This little light of mine, oh, let it shine, let it shine, let it shine, let it R A D I A T E. Radiate. In Beta, there's a light that shines bright on and through the scholars of this great organization. We stand on pillars which honor our achievement, empower, stagger, and character, develop the future leader in us, and service. We get to see the smiles in other spaces through service projects. The light of Beta is our motto. Let us lead by serving others. Mr. John Maxwell once said, "A leader knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way." In my school, we walk this path daily. When you do something for me, close your eyes. If you're not peeking, it should be dark. Now let your heart be the light. Think for a moment. What are your dreams? What are your goals? Now open your eyes. I've been asked these questions as an elementary student, but the cool thing is, Beta has helped me answer them. It is true that a bright future begins with Beta, because it has opened many doors to me with opportunities just like today. My dream of becoming a news anchor is a lot brighter because of the Beta experience. Today, I leave you with a challenge. Don't just have a dream, but live out your dream and help others do the same. Although this light of mine may be little, it's just enough to radiate the world. Thank you.
So can you see why she came first in the nation last year? Also, I would like to recognize our Beta sponsors. Beta sponsors, please stand, because I cannot do it alone, so I have someone. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We appreciate you, and we appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Mr.?
Ms. Gordon.
Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Gordon, uh, I know I try to support you every year, and, and this year, uh, things kind of changed, and I think the school is now in Ms. Dolores's district, but the support's still going to be there.
Yes, so at this time, um, we'd like to present to you a chair for the Beta Club.
You can't make it Orlando on this, just call me. We'll get you some more.
Say cheese.
Cheese.
At this time, Mr. Wright, I'd like to say something about, um, the principal. Um, would you please stand, Pat? See, I can call her Pat, because we worked together for several years at Revlon School. Thank you very much for what you are doing and what you've done with your students. And if there's any time that we are able to help you, please call. You got the number? Dial it.
Thank you all, young people, and Ms. Gordon, for your leadership and for bringing the young folks out, okay? Thank you all so much. Y'all keep up the good work now, okay?
That's right.
All right. Next item on the agenda is audits. Um, this is audits in third reading. Head for the consideration of requests from Land Code Developer LLC to rezone property on Gardner Boulevard in Holly Hill. Tax map number zero three 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 dash zero zero dash zero three dash zero zero five from Forest Agriculture District and Business Industrial District. Well, this is, uh, this... Minister, Minister Squared, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The planning commission met on November thirtieth.
Sorry, but I didn't know Squared.
And this is to discuss the recommendations for Land Code Developer. Uh, they requested the change from forest and agriculture to business industrial for the purpose of a commercial industrial development. Uh, the adjacent property owners were notified via U S mail by the planning commission. They were given the opportunity to submit comments electronically, uh, via phone and in writing to the planning director and to attend in person. Uh, there was zero, uh, citizens that expressed support or opposition. Planning commission presents this to you, this to you with a six to zero approval.
Thank you, Mr. Minister Squared. See, that's why I always say it's a team reference, so they can probably keep you in track sometime. Can I get a motion of second for third and final?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ramonell and second by either Mr. Castro and Ms. Frazier, either one. That we do third and final reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Ayes have it and the motions carried. Next item on the agenda is, uh, a second reading, and this is an audit authorizing Orangeburg County to add into a lease agreement regarding a portion of the Orangeburg County Accultum Building pursuant to which Orangeburg County shall be the landlord and, uh, the Department of Environmental Services shall be the tenant. Mr. Minister Squared, you'll give a sermon for those who may not have been here on the first reading.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And this is a, uh, lease agreement that we're entering in to provide space, uh, for some of the members of the new newly formed Department of Environmental Services, which used to be D H E C as a part of the state. And they're going to be located at the Agriculture Building on fifteen fifty Henley Street and for a period of ten years with monthly installments of eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Any questions for the Minister Squared before I ask for a second for second reading on this item? Hearing none, can I get a motion of second?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Frazier and second by Mr. Castro, that the second reading on item two is described by the administration. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposers? Ayes have it and motions carried. Next item on the agenda is, uh, this is first reading, and, uh, this is planning, uh, commission resolution. For the consideration of requests from Rochelle Jameson to rezone property on twelve eighty-seven Campus Drive in Orangeburg, uh, tax map number zero one seven three dash one two dash zero one dash zero zero seven, from residential general district to commercial general district. Mr. Minister Squared?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The planning commission met on February fourteenth to discuss this recommendation, and the request is to go from residential general to commercial general for the purpose of being able to run a business. Um, there were three citizens who expressed their support, zero citizens who expressed opposition. Planning commission present this to you with a five to zero approval.
Thank you, Mr. Minister Squared. Any, um, questions from any council persons? Hearing none, can I get a motion of second for first reading on this item?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
Moved by Ms. Frazier and second by Ms. Walker for first reading on item three is described by the administration. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Ayes have it and the motions carried. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation from the Tax and Tourism Committee. Uh, I'll give you two, Mr. Squared, for summary of that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Tax and Tourism Committee met on February twenty-fifth at their regular meeting, um, and the following recommendations were made. The Grand American Coon Hunt, an amount of seventeen thousand. The Safe Organization, uh, for a request for marketing for a women and girls' summit and concert of five thousand. Faith Group of Action for advertising marketing materials for annual summit in an amount of twenty-two thousand six hundred for a total funds requested of forty-four thousand six hundred.
We've heard the recommendation of the Tourism Committee, uh, from the Minister Squared. If I have any questions or concerns, I would like to ask. Hearing none, can I get a motion of second that we, uh, accept the committee's recommendation on those items?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Frazier and second by, um, Mr. Castro that we accept the Tourism Committee's recommendation. All in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Ayes have it and the motion is passed. The next item on the agenda is appointment, uh, board to commission committee and, uh, have, as an appointment from District One for the County Board of Assessment, Appeal Board for District One. Um, I want to be all, make the recommendation for that for me.
Chair, let's just make a recommendation that the, uh, name of Mr. Christa Hassel. Oh, that recommend for that.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It has been moved, and moved by Mr. Ramonell and second by Mr. Castro that Ms. Christa, uh, Castro, so she's the now Christian.
Christa Hassel.
Mr. Hassel be, uh, appointed to the Board of Appeal District One. Uh, all in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Ayes have it and the motion is carried. That is, next item on the agenda is a vote for executive session and, uh, under the Economic Development update, which is allowed on the code thirty dash four dash seventy-five, and a discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. And this is, uh, for project, uh, Rhino. We will be getting an update from the, uh, Economic Development Group on this project, which is that coordinating Rhino, and they, that's the desire of businesses, they usually use a coordinator until they decide whether they're coming and, and once they get all their, all their ducks in the hole, then they will give you a coordinator of all backgrounds. But for now, that's what the planning executive session for. There will be no voting on that matter after the, the motion is second for executive session.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Dolores Frazier and second by Ms. Walker that we do an executive session for, uh, that item that would just, just, for the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? Ayes have it and motions carried. Uh, the next item before we go for adjournment, do you have any comment from any council persons or staff?
Yes, I have one. Um, the young lady, Imani, um, you did a fantastic job as always, and I want to say something. Mr. John, would you please get up and tell us about your daughter? And the microphone is here. She's going to be our little Miss Angelo.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm always proud to talk about my baby girl. All right. Um, but really proud of her, uh, national speech champion first ever. She also was the first female to win the Dr. MLK Orator Competition for our school district. Uh, she's in the process now of finalizing the last few edits of her first book, uh, which actually chronicles her role to the national championship of winning the National Beta Club. So really excited about that, and, um, and just thank you for the opportunity, uh, to give her platform and our, our COVID peers a platform to share the gifts of townsmanship.
And I tell what position you have with Orangeburg Consolidated.
All right, so currently I'm Director of Student Services for our school district.
Let me add something about Mr. John. My daughter, and I'm not gonna, well, I'm gonna have to tell you age a little bit about her age, but my daughter, who's now twenty-six years old, uh, Mr. John was her third-grade teacher. I think that was his first teaching assignment, second teaching assignment, and her and the classmates, they recite all the songs and the inspirational quotes and stuff that Mr. John gave them now, uh, at the age of twenty-six from the third grade. So thank you so much for the inspiration that you continue to give our students here.
Let's see, y'all, man, you don't look that old.
There's one other thing I'd like to say about somebody in the audience, and that's Rochelle. Get up and tell us about yourself a little bit, please. I enjoy putting you on the spot.
Good evening, council and community. I'm Rochelle Jameson Holmes, the daughter of Brother Jameson and Flawless Jameson. I'm native of Orangeburg County, and, uh, we own the matriarch of the breakfast and big venue downtown Orangeburg, and third, Rochelle's Island was celebrated thirty-three years in downtown Orangeburg. And we also have the Empower ABWA chapter. We are local chapter that was celebrated seventy years here of the American Business Association. I'm proud to be the outgoing national president of ABWA. Thank you.
You and my friend Holmes, too, if you know where I can shop.
He's in Charleston.
Is he Charleston?
But he stands in regards.
Well, you tell Fred I got his back, huh? Anybody else? Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I want to shift gears a little bit, and I'm not complaining, but complaining is, you know, just riding around the county. You've probably seen a lot of DOT guys doing a lot of trash picking, picking up as we speak. We, as a county, all of us, we need to do better. Then I should do better. It's sad when you go down the road, and you look behind you in the mirror and see trash blown up behind your vehicle. That's, that's a bad thought. So I'm not saying, and I feel, I know, the, the, what I'm saying is not the one that's here probably doing it, but let's try to encourage somebody else not to do it. But we need to try to make our county a lot cleaner, and we can do it. Jenny Cooper used to put a lot of emphasis on that, and but we just got to do better. Thank you.
Thank you all for all your comments, staff. Harold, you got anything for?
I'd just like to echo what Councilman Reverend said, and that we've been working on different initiatives to try to make sure that we get the county more cleaner, and we're working with communities and as well as some commercial entities that we feel like could help us as well. Working on a project, especially with Councilman Walker, as we try to work on the three oh one corridor, we've reached out to some businesses and as well as industry to try to help facilitate a more cleaner entryway into Orangeburg.
Thank you so much. Thank everyone for all the comments and what's for, and you want to thank the public for attending our meeting tonight, and the young folks. I hope that you all enjoyed the experience, and this year we're lucky that it's not a long meeting tonight, so maybe you can stay, just get your feet wet and go back home. It's not always this kind, but sometimes it is what it is. We take the good, the bad, and the other, and try to do the best we can with the time. Thank you so very much at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I, can I add one more thing? I almost forgot to say that I am an alumnus of the Edisto School System, Edisto Primary, Elementary, and High School, so. You take your long way, especially in Orangeburg County education.
I got you.
Thank you for Harold for being a cougar.
And I just would like to acknowledge Ms. Iri. Because Iri is the cleanup person in the three oh one Brentwood area. She picks up trash by herself on a consistent basis. And we rode around one day for about over an hour, just looking at different locations in the area. And because of her, we learned of locations that could do a lot better in improving the beautification of Orangeburg County. So we did take the information you presented, and we're working on those items right now as we speak.
Thank you, thank you. I'm working too. That's right.
Thank you so much, Ms. Walker. As we said, like we always say, one person can make a difference. And you have to always make sure that this is a team effort. We all need each other, and we need to work together. People talk negative things about the county, I always say that if you're not trying to make it better, you shouldn't talk about it. Try to make a difference, so thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to have a motion of second for everyone.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Castro, second by.